Will you take a seat? We're gonna go ahead and get started with the meeting.
Pastor Parsons is supposed to be here, but he's in the back.
Okay. I'll ask you all to please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor William Parsons of Redeemer Lutheran Church.
Let us pray. The people watch over those who are entrusted with the administration of Fairhope's government. Make them pure and honest, keep them from temptation and bribery, from favoritism and prejudice, from indolence and neglect of duty. Create in them earnest desire to serve faithfully the people of Fairhope. Attend to their efforts that their work may not suffer from mediocrity. Permit them to experience the joys of noble service completed for a grateful people. Encourage cooperation from those who are served and from those who help to serve. Use every willing service and every effort to put forth for good government here in Fairhope. Bless the rule of your people here and that your will may be accomplished among them. Promote all things for the good of this community. We ask this in the name of your Son. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Parsons. Counsel, the first item tonight to consider is to amend the agenda, and that would be to add as item number 21, the one-time supplemental pay increase for the city employees. We discussed this in the work session. You should have a copy of that resolution handed out to you by the clerk prior to the meeting. I would like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add this item.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all is in favor amended the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, that will be item number 21. Okay. Item one on tonight's agenda is to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were held on the 26th of November. Do you have any changes, additions, or deletions to these minutes? Hearing none, all entertain a motion to approve them as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. For the second year now, Lee Parks with Warren Averitt has been doing the city's audit. The purpose of an independent audit is to assess and report on city operations and services. He and his team have been conducting performance audits that identify ways to strengthen public accountability and improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the city. This extensive process has helped us better identify how we can do better in all of our departments. Since the treasurer position has been vacant, various employees have assumed the additional responsibilities. The different roles have, for these responsibilities within the department, currently increased the risk of what is currently in place. It increases the risk of fraud, misstatements due to the potential increased risk of improper controls or lack of segregation of duties. He recommends during the treasurer's vacancy that the city consider assigning finance department staff to perform the treasury's supervisory role to ensure the appropriate segregation of duties is in place. Evaluating the current structure now is also important. All municipalities are unique, however, most municipalities in the state of Alabama have the treasury function under the finance department. The more you segregate the department, the more inefficient it becomes. I've asked Lee Parks to discuss with you, counsel, about the overall structure of the city finance department, how to maintain separation of duties, something that is not in place now, nor was it in place before the treasurer left, before the city fills the approximately $80,000 a year position. We should listen to his recommendations. This position has only been, this position may only need to be under the finance department, helping the finance department be more effective, and could be at a far less salary range. During the last work session, we discussed the sales tax ordinance, which still needs to be amended. It is not on tonight's agenda, so I'd like to also add this discussion to the work session next, let's see, the 20th in 10 days. We don't want to go through another year of stockpiling money into a fund to pay off city debt early and a fund that is appropriated for capital purchases. Jill, our finance director, evaluated these funds in the absence of our treasurer and quickly discovered that no additional funds are needed in the department for prepayment. With regard to scheduled payments, if we make regularly scheduled payments in addition to what is already in this fund, city debt will be paid in full June 1st, 2019. I didn't know this before because this information wasn't given to me through the treasurer. Again, another example of why the finance director should be over all of the finance This is not to say that we, you may not choose to use the utility profit, or sales tax profit, rather, to purchase the K-1 or other quality of life purchases. We just want to make sure that when we use these funds, that we're doing it for a defined purpose instead of just putting into a fund and having an increase for no reason. To put, this is the other part, I'm sorry, it's kind of fragmented here, I threw this together right before the meeting, but when we took the amount of money that we thought we would need to prepay the city debt out of the budget, that left approximately only $500,000 in the utility transfers needed, where it was 1.2. To put this in perspective, and we have a slide here, before I took office, we averaged 51% is what the city needed from our utilities profits, 51% of its profits, to break even. The 2019 budget now only requires 5% of the utility budget, and I wanted to put it in those terms because, you know, I kept saying, you know, it's almost $6 million that we're preventing needing from the utility profits, but I think this is a better way to explain it. That is significant. It's not to say that we won't use utility profits in the future for other things, but when we define that percentage of what we feel should, we should take from utility profits, that still allows it to keep up with this infrastructure and maintenance, that money can then be spent on things other than operation expense, which it should, again, quality of life purposes. Beginning next year, I will be forming a new committee for the city of Fairhope to carry on Fairhope Locals' mission founded by a group of entrepreneurs to support local entrepreneurs. A large part of Fairhope's character comes from the local independent businesses and the personalities that form these businesses. We are a town of entrepreneurs, and this committee will be tasked with helping this administration better partner with them. As an entrepreneur who has grown up in a family of entrepreneurs, I am intimately aware how much time, dedication, and passion goes into making a business successful. All this hard work pays off big for our city and our community. Independent retailers return more than three times as much money per dollar of sales than a chain competitor. A small change in the way you spend can have a big impact for our city. The slogan, as you can see, is "Invest in the Nest," is just that, reinvesting your dollars to better our local community and economy, support those who make a significant positive impact on our community, and sustains our unique character. And lastly, I don't want to forget to thank Public Works and our police department for another flawless Christmas parade. Thank you for your hard work. My folks.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item on the agenda with public participation, if you want to speak to items number five through 21, I'm gonna ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address. Clearly, for the record, you will be given three minutes to address the council. So, these pertain to agenda items only. If you are here to speak about the entertainment district, this is your opportunity to speak to that. So, I can tell you that I would anticipate the ordinance being introduced tonight. I do not anticipate a final vote being taken. So, I'll open the floor up for agenda items five through 20.
My name is Jared Henry, and I live at 124 Destrehan, and I'm retired. Not retarded, I'm retired. And Jack Burrell and I rode a mechanical bull, and you have been riding that mechanical bull ever since. But I wouldn't speak against the entertainment.
We went on it at the same time, by the way. Let's make that clear.
But you had to help me. Yeah, and I spent more time on it, you did.
You did.
I want to speak against the entertainment district. Our, just, we just had the Christmas parade, it was a success, and as far as I know, there were no problems with it. It was a family kind of atmosphere that is significant for Fairhope and downtown Fairhope when we have our parades and when we have Mardi Gras. It's a place that I can bring my grandchildren and know that there'll be, everything will be okay. I don't want to add alcohol to that situation. If we add alcohol, we can see it out of control, and I know that you, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate this council and our mayor, because we have the city that we have, because you guys have made good decisions, and I appreciate that. And I hope this will be a good decision to make. I know the pressure from others are there on you to make a decision in the wrong direction, but I want to encourage you to make a decision in the right direction. I know last time you voted for that, and the reason you voted for that, if it ever gets out of control, that you will bring it back in control, but you know that once you put something in place, the fact of bringing it back is almost impossible. There was a lady who called her animal control person and said, "There's a skunk in the basement." And so, the animal control guy said to leave the door open, and she called back the next day and said, "There's two skunks in the basement." Once you open the door to something, then it gets out of hand. So, we have so much going for us in Fairhope, Alabama, and especially when we have Mardi Gras and the other parades, that I hate to see it given over to something that will take it out of control. I want to encourage you to make the moral right decision, because I know that you will think about that and pray about that, make it a matter of consideration. So, I hope you will have the right courage to do that. I don't mind people drinking at, well, I do, at Florabama, but I don't want to bring Florabama to the streets of Fairhope, Alabama. So, I want to encourage you to make the right decision and vote against this entertainment district, and thank you for giving me the time.
Thank you, Reverend Henry.
My name is Ben Smith, 217 South Mobile Street. I agree with the previous person that spoke. I'm against it, and one of the things I'd like for the council to do, since you're not voting on it to do it tonight, is to get the opinion of the chief of police, of the current acting chief of police, and the police department, because if I remember correctly, Chief Pettis was against it, and hopefully, our new acting chief is also. But she says she needed to study it more, she wasn't up to speed on the item, and that she hadn't prepared for her speech today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
I live at 8552 Garden Circle. I also am a bartender and manager for the Fly Bar and Dragonfly. I'm sure everyone here knows it, and I can see a lot of your faces that look very familiar. The Goat Street Taco is gonna be back soon, I promise, just to let you guys know. I have in my hand here over 2,000 signatures that were petitioned a couple of months ago when we got all this started, just to ask our, our customers and the general public, we did go out into the street and ask people for their signatures, whether they would like the entertainment district or not. It is worded this way, a petition composed by the Downtown Fairhope Food and Beverage Coalition. This is a petition to pass the Entertainment District Ordinance for Downtown Fairhope, which will protect the small business, ABC licensed businesses downtown from facing fines due to the current open container restrictions. This, this is the issue, is what I feel. A lot of people are very misconstrued on what we actually want to have happen here. We don't want people to have this open container policy where it's a bunch of hoodlums running around. That's not what we're trying to do. We're trying to protect that small business investment. Although the Fairhope Parade was an awesome success, that was also the anniversary where over seven bars were under a sting operation from the ABC board that had operatives come in, get a beer, put it in the container, and walk off with it. Some of those were very borderline, honestly unlawful, the way that they came in and did that. Now, we do our best, we do have doormen at our door all the time, we constantly iterate that it is not a to-go, these containers that were given, we use nothing but glass at the Fly Bar to maintain that, you cannot leave the premises with this alcohol, but it still happens. People do not care what we say to them, and we try very, very hard to control that. But if we did pass this ordinance, we could monitor it even more closely, and we would have less people, you know, breaking the law, then that would hurt the small business. When I saw the "Invest in the Nest" that Karen talked about, I think that's amazing, and I think this is an opportunity to show the small businesses, especially the restaurants and the bars, that we do care about their revenue, and we care that they stay in business. So, I thank you very much.
My name is David Shepherd. I live at 21210 County Road 13. I'm here to speak in opposition to item number eight, and with all respect to the prior speaker, I think it's quite instructive. She tells y'all that she cannot control her customers breaking the law. How does this council think you are going to control the entire public from leaving the premises you set out and/or from others coming into that premises? If a, an owner of a business cannot control that single door that goes out to the public, it is impossible to control the entire area. It was 1959 when my family and I moved to this little community. As I went through the Fairhope schools, and I respect our past city leaders, that's not to say I don't respect y'all, but this happened in the past. I respect our past city leaders because they had the wisdom to make decisions to do things when they needed to do them, but also, they had the decision and the wisdom not to do things when they needed not to be done. And so, for a community that I lived in, and my friends across the bay weren't too, they weren't too impressed with Fairhope, and if y'all grew up here, you knew we sort of were chatted by those across the bay. Nobody would want to come over here and live here. We're just a bunch of potato and corn farmers. Because of the wisdom of our city leaders in doing what they should do and in not doing what they should not do, all of a sudden, that changed. And now, the people on that side of the bay want to be over here, and many have come over here, without an entertainment district. Y'all know that this city is one of the fastest-growing in our state without an entertainment district. Y'all know and are proud of the fact, just as we are, that this, this city is written up nationwide, accolades from all types of magazines, without an entertainment district. Look at what this city has done without an entertainment district. Why would you want to risk, on your watch, taking a backwards step? If passed, this will change the city of Fairhope. Is that my three minutes?
Go ahead, I started you maybe a little early, if I can stop this, then here I will.
All the progress, all the accolades, the, the coveting idea of, "Oh, I wish I could live in Fairhope," all of that has been accomplished without an entertainment district. Please don't risk that change.
Good evening. My name is Brent Shaw, 19721 Hunter's Loop, and I just want to basically say that as a parent of two daughters that's grown up here in Fairhope, and now as a grandparent with a grandchild, I've never felt unsafe about coming to downtown Fairhope for parades of any kind, and I would like for it to stay that way. And so, I want to encourage you strongly, opposed to this entertainment district, and I encourage you to vote against it as well. There are some things, and the mayor mentioned the uniqueness of Fairhope, and that is one of the things that makes our town unique. I don't worry about my children coming down here, and I don't want that to change. Also, it may be, I understand the restaurant owner's plight somewhat, too, and it may be that the law is not a good law to start with. To be honest with you, it ought to be more on the individual person anyway, it seems to me like, but I certainly would, maybe there's some consideration there that ought to be looked into as well. I understand the fines being pretty heavy, but anyway, I won't get into that part, but I just want to say again, I strongly encourage you not to vote for it. I think it will not add to what we are as Fairhope in any way, in fact, I think it will take away from who we are as Fairhope. Quite honestly, I don't want to be like Mobile, I don't want to be like New Orleans. We have many good things going for us without that, so I strongly encourage you not to approve this. Thank you.
My name is Eric Hankins. I live at 205 South Drive. I moved to Fairhope about two years ago from Oxford, Mississippi. Oxford shares a great number of similarities with Fairhope, the one, big difference being an enormous university community and college student community. Because of the university, there was a lot of pressure on the city to constantly expand its stance on providing space and time for alcohol consumption, and I understand often the tension that you all must be feeling about that. But I can tell you from 10 years of being in Oxford, that there was a, there was a proportional relationship between the expanse of time, times for alcohol to be consumed, bars staying open longer, widening the places where alcohol could be consumed. There's a constant debate about having alcohol outside and in the streets, and I can tell you that during that 10-year period, as the reach of alcohol increased, family friendliness went down. There was an inversely proportional relationship between the two. And so, I can tell you, as a fairly new resident of Fairhope, its family friendliness is clear, its unique character is clear, and I realize that it's very difficult to monetize family friendliness. How do you put a dollar value on that? But I can tell you, it is very, very, very valuable, and it will suffer as a result of the increase of people and places and opportunity for alcohol to be consumed. And so, I would strongly encourage you to say no to this measure and preserve, as you've already heard tonight, the thing that makes this city so very wonderful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Haskins.
My name is Cecilia Brini. My address is 103 Mulberry Lane. My husband and I own two businesses on Fairhope Avenue. Even without an entertainment district, occasionally, when he comes early to open the store and get ready for business, there are beer bottles and beer cans tucked under the flower boxes or blatantly just left on the, on the windowsill of our store. I beg you to invest in the nest, and I beg you to invest in keeping it clean. I would like to quote Andy Stanley, who once said, "There was a time when we adjusted our behavior to fit the law." We have come into a period in America where we now adjust the law to fit our behavior. That is a fatal twist. Thank you.
Anybody else for items five through 20? Seeing though, and I'll close public participation on agenda items. Remember, you'll have another opportunity to address the council at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, when we have public participation for any other items you'd like to bring for the council. Counsel, we'll move on to council comments, and I'll ask, start off with Councilman Robinson.
Yes, sir. I want to echo one of the things the mayor said and thank the police department and Public Works for all their help with our Christmas parade this past Friday, but I also want to, want to mention and thank the volunteers on the Christmas Parade Committee and Page, our wonderful city employee liaison, because without the, all the effort and work that they put into it, that nobody gets to see, that event wouldn't be near what it is. And so, I appreciate it, and I thank you guys again for a wonderful event.
Counsel McConyers?
Yeah, I've got a few comments this, this evening. First, I'd like to start, if my dad's watching, wish him a happy 71st birthday. Always a big day, and he's, he certainly stays in tune with what's going on in Fairhope. Next item, I always try to bring up shop local around Christmas, support our local downtown merchants. They've had a couple of rainy Saturdays, I want to say maybe three in a row. If you're not able to get out Monday through Friday during regular working hours, I believe this Thursday, they're trying to encourage most of the merchants to stay up until 7:00 PM. So, this Thursday is an opportunity to, to shop later than normal hours, so if you can't get out there between regular working hours, try to get out there Thursday evening. And last, I just wanted to mention, I dropped in on the Fairhope Junior Council, they had a meeting, I see Aaron in the crowd, and I wanted to go introduce myself and just congratulate the members that were selected, and I wanted to tell y'all that they have a really impressive group, I believe it's 10 individuals, and they kind of range from ninth through 12th grade, and just a good group, and I wound up sitting, sitting in the audience and watching them for their entire meeting, and just a lot of, a lot of talent there, a lot of good, good discussion, and seemed like a really lively and involved group, and I just think that seeing people that are younger and that age that take an interest in, in their city and their government, it was really, really good to see. I think a lot of good things for the future for that group, and they're the, they're the inaugural group, so I just let them know that they set the tone and kind of their, their territory to charge, so congratulations again to all of y'all that were selected. Look forward to seeing what y'all do.
Counselman Brown?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate the appreciation of the Public Works and Police Department for a safe Christmas parade. That's it.
Counselman Boone?
Well, normally, I don't do this, but I have such a good time at the Christmas parade. I highly suggest if you didn't come this year, to come next year, because it is a family. I highly suggest if you didn't come this year, to come next year, because it is a family-oriented event, and it's fun for everybody, and I would like to apologize to any and all that I hit in the head with the candy. And a future apology for next year that I probably will hit in the head again, but it is, as I say, is a lot of fun, and we really appreciate the city putting it on and the Public Works and the Police Department for handling it the way they do. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to echo everybody else's sentiments. The problem with going last is you repeat whatever everybody else has said, but thank you to the staff that did such a great job with the Christmas parade, and I want to also thank the staff for not supplying us with those hard caramel candies that you throw and hit people in the head with. There was a lot more family-friendly candy being thrown, except for the suckers with the sticks. You had to weed those out and just go hand those to the kids, so you don't want to put anybody's eye out, but so if anybody was hit in the head with candy, it was Kevin. So anyway, with that, I'll close council comments. We'll move on. We'll move on to item five on tonight's agenda, which is the final adoption of an ordinance to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, the request to zone the property of L.A. Development LLC to R2 medium-density, single-family residential district concurrent with annexation into the city of Fairhope. This property is generally located on the south side of Manly Road in Fairhope, Alabama, also known as Pine Wood Phase Two. Mr. King?
And thank you, Council President, council members. And what I'll call your attention to on the slide here, this is our zoning map showing the location of the site. The large piece of property immediately east of the site is the Fairhope Soccer Complex. I'll also call your attention to the, you'll see the subdivision case number under project type, so the subdivision was based upon R2 zoning, so this annexation requests R2 zoning. You'll see the zoning case number there as well, which we're considering here tonight. I'll call your attention that this subdivision and this zoning request is based upon 18 lots on 7.42 acres, which results in 2.43 units per acre of development density. And of course, your aerial map right here, also showing the site and the relation to the surrounding developments, and the soccer complex is on the east side, and you see the consulting engineer in there here tonight on behalf of the developer. What I'll call to everyone's attention here is the original Pine Wood subdivision development was subdivided, approved by the planning commission, and that is the orange, the light orange color, those original lots fronting upon Manly Road. What the current subdivision case for which you're considering the annexation is the green area. It's actually a re-subdivision of a remnant parcel left over by the previous phase of development. What I'll call to everyone's attention here is the green space requirements. We always try to hit upon some of the data in the subdivision portion when we're reviewing it with the council, and so it has 17% green space in the subdivision. That exceeds the 10% requirement of the subdivision regulations, and we won't go into great detail here, but we've shown on this slide that the various drainage components of subdivision regulations have compliance with this development, and then some other details we discussed in greater detail last time. We're happy to answer questions. What we'll elaborate here is just to reiterate the density proposed by this development, and it's built around R2 zoning. The lot sizes are based on R2 zoning, but the development density of 2.43 units per acre is not only less than allowable for R2 zoning, it's actually less than the 2.9 units per acre also allowable for R1 zoning. And so therefore, the staff recommendation is approval of the case, which again is the conditional annexation to R2 zoning. The sawgrass engineering, Mr. Chaffin is here tonight on behalf of the developer for any questions of the engineer, and I'm happy to answer questions as well on behalf of staff.
Questions for staff or the engineer, counsel? So, Mr. King, if we rezon this, is the plat, would the plat be set as proposed as well, or are we doing just the zoning and then they could go back and change that plat?
No, sir. We have, and I forwarded to the, one of the slides from the subdivision case, which is on your screens right now, so we do have an approved preliminary plat. A condition of approval of that preliminary plat is the zoning case that is being heard tonight, assuming approval tonight. That will satisfy the condition of approval that will allow this subdivision in preliminary stage to move forward.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Any at all? Did you have something to add, Mr. Dias?
No, sir, just getting ready.
Okay. Okay, hearing no further questions, counsel. I'll turn it over to you. Any discussion among you? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for final adoption. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
I have to abstain. Okay. Motion carries three. Thank you, counsel. Item number six is a final adoption. This is an ordinance amending zoning ordinance number 1253, a request to amend ordinance number 1582, known as Old Battles Village Pud, phases two, three, four, five, and six. The property is owned by Truland Homes LLC and is generally located on the east side of Garrison Boulevard in Fairhope, Alabama. Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Council President. I'll be brief. This is the second reading and final adoption, but this is a PUD amendment to the Old Battles Village Development PUD. Primarily, the major change to this is an area called the hamlet, which is the area outlined in black on your screen. The site plan on your left is the original site plan for the PUD. The site plan on the right is the proposed, and you can see the hamlet's sort of the area that's sort of in the middle of that, that they have chosen to ask for an amendment to. The lots originally were 177. This hamlet area increases it by four to 181, 181 lots. Just want to mention that the surrounding developments surrounding the Old Battles Village, the density is about 2.76 units per acre. With this, the density would be 2.09 units per acre for the Old Battles Village, so it's a little, the Old Battles Village is a little bit less dense than some of the surrounding developments that are there. I also want to point out that the hamlet, which is again the major change to this PUD, the lot sizes are a little bit smaller, but if you can see from your screen, they have used green belts of 20 to 25 feet in width to separate the lots that are dissimilar in size. Again, the hamlet's a little bit smaller lots, and as you can see from the screen, again, the green belt does separate the dissimilar lots from the lots that are a little bit larger, and so that creates a bit of a buffer and a compatibility transition, I would call it. And also to the south, there's a large area of open space that's also, will be set aside as permanent open space in the PUD, again, creating an extra measure of compatibility with the surrounding development. And, Council President, that's all I have to say, and be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this development.
Counsel, I'll turn it over to you. Any questions for Mr. Dias? Is the developer or engineer here? Should they have questions for them?
The, we had a call from the engineer, and they had a conflict, weren't able to be here, but we'll try to answer the best we can. If there's answers, questions we can answer, we'll, I think, be prudent to ask the table if there's questions that we can't answer.
So counsel, I think bottom line is they've increased it by four lots there in the hamlet, known as the Phase Five there. So hearing no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion for final adoption.
Does it move?
Have a motion and a second for final adoption. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number seven is an ordinance of the city of Fairhope to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the people relating to development along the Greeno Road corridor and the filing of rezoning, site plan approvals, and multiple occupancy project applications within the corporate limits of the city of Fairhope. Mr. Dias and counsel, we touched on this a fair amount in the work session, but do you want to expand on that now, Mr. Dias?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Council President. Again, this is something we discussed at the work session at the last meeting. As you know, the city conducted a visual preference survey with the help of a consultant of ours that we used, and the visual preference survey was a method in using images and pictures to elicit some feedback from the public who took the online survey, but also at the meeting. We had two public meetings and went over the online survey, and the purpose of this is to try to get feedback from the public about what they like or what they don't like, and how it may relate to Greeno Road and greater Fairhope. We hear many times about what people don't want, what they don't want to see, but we don't get much feedback on what people want to see. So the visual preference survey kind of turns that kind of upside down, where we try to get feedback about what people want, and so it helps us better plan for uses and buffers and things of that nature for certain areas of town. Greeno Road's a very important corridor, as you all know. It's the entrance into Fairhope, and it really sets the tone of Fairhope, and so we feel like it's very, very important to make sure we get this right. We have had some developments we've struggled with over the years with Greeno Road about how to handle those. We hope that the visual preference survey will help us get a better handle on that. In speaking with Sherri Lee and the consultant, I believe we are expecting to have comments back, a report back from the consultant first two weeks in January is what we believe, and so although we do have the effective period of 270 days, I don't think we'll come close to that. I think we'll be able to do our work and get it, to get any amendments moving forward very quickly, so I don't anticipate that going that length at all. And as we said before, as soon as we adopt some changes, that would eliminate the, that would end the moratorium, so our goal is to do, get it done much, much quicker than 270 days, so I don't anticipate that going that far. But the effective area is the area outlined in blue, and I put a map on your, at your seat as well, but the area outlined in blue, it basically reaches the northernmost part of Fairhope to the southernmost part of Fairhope, and would include only those areas that are within the corporate limits of Fairhope. And the moratorium would apply to the acceptance of rezoning applications, site plan applications, and multiple occupancy project applications, and so that would kind of hold, have that in a holding pattern until we get our work completed as far as the moratorium and have a report and some recommendations to the council for adoption. If we have a project that has been submitted and under review, or then that would continue to move on, we would not stop that project. It would continue to move on without any interference from the city. Be glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, can I ask somebody to introduce this ordinance, please? I'll introduce the ordinance. The ordinance has been introduced. Do you have any questions for Mr. Dias?
I guess without having seen the results of that survey, do you have any preliminary expectations that you see being recommended to counsel for changes that you would want to go ahead and share at this time, or is it a little early?
Well, not seen reported. Don't want to speak too much about that. I know one of the things that has become pretty evident just from experiencing and hearing the comments about these rezonings, there are certain areas where drive-throughs may need to be reviewed. We have several PUDs in place that have limited drive-throughs along Greeno, so that's something that I would expect us to look at very closely. I mean, there's areas of Greeno that may be, you know, compatible with drive-throughs uses, but there's a lot of areas that probably aren't, so I would say that's one we would look at. Also...
How would the visual preference survey determine what area along that corridor that some people might allow them or not allow them?
Well, now, as far as the drive-throughs, that's just information that just gathering through the meetings, that the visual preference survey really didn't get into that too much, but just gathering comments from the past couple of years and having the PUDs we've discussed, that's kind of been a constant issue. We had a bank recently, and so that's just from my impression of getting feedback from the public during those meetings. I will tell you that with the visual preference survey, you had a series of images that were much more of a kind of a village-type center, and in those, you didn't see any drive-throughs, or if you saw one, it was very, very hidden, and so that's something that we're probably looking at, too, but that's in certain areas of Greeno. I think that in some of the images and just getting feedback from just watching people looking at the images on the screen, additional buffering maybe in certain areas along Greeno Road would probably be something that we would look at, again, not knowing the results of the visual preference survey, I'm just guessing at that, but I would suggest those are probably two things we'd want to look at. Some areas you don't want to, you know, buffering as you get closer to the intersections, that kind of, that's sort of the village center, buffering becomes less needed because you want that, you want a different feel from that. The last thing I would mention is probably signage. What kind of signage do we want? How big signage do we want? Backlit signs, which are internally lit, or do we want signs that are downlit from a light source? And so those are probably three things that I would anticipate us looking at, not knowing the results of the VPS, obviously, but those are three things I think we'd be looking at.
Would this also include things like pushing the buildings out closer towards the road and having the parking kind of hidden behind the building rather than directly on 98?
It would. If you recall from the VPS, there are several images that had various types of that. Some had the parking completely behind the building. Some of them had the parking all in front as sort of a, you know, to get feedback on that, but I think that's something also that we would look at. That's something that can really aid the streetscape environment, how it looks, the aesthetics of it. I think that's something we would look at as well.
Mr. Dias, is there any reason for the council to have concerns about a rush of applications in the next 10 days if we let this lay over to the next council meeting? Because the purpose is to put the brakes on those applications if we open the floodgates into the next 10 days.
That's a potential. We would require a complete application, so it would have to be complete in all sense to, for it to be. If we were to wait till the next meeting, again, it would have to be a complete application, so if it was deficient in some areas, that would not be a complete application, it would not go forward. If we do have a complete application, we would process it as we would normally now. I haven't, we haven't had many discussions with the people lately regarding Greeno Road, so I don't anticipate anything coming in within the next, you know, two weeks, but I, you know, I'm not, I can't predict what may or may not happen, but I know that we have not had any discussions with many people at all about Greeno Road or any future developments on Greeno Road.
Any other questions for staff, counsel? Unless I hear a motion for immediate consideration, we'll let this lay over to the next council meeting for final reading. Thank you. Okay, item eight is an ordinance establishing an entertainment district for the city of Fairhope. Wanted to just touch on a few highlights, and actually, before that's introduced, point out a few things. On section one, exhibit A, concurrent with the central business district, just keep in mind that that central business district has changed slightly. You should have a copy in your new handout showing the current central business district. Under section three, in the very last sentence, concerning cups, it says it should be approved or purchased through the city of Fairhope or designated vendor. Section five says the only exception is being allowed to walk about freely with alcoholic, alcohol in approved shatter-proof cups. That's the only changes that I know of to what you were given last week, is those small changes. I want to say this for the general public, is that what is written in this ordinance is that the entertainment district would only be enacted during special events, and that would be one hour prior to the special event and one hour after the special event. Entertainment districts are only applicable to licensed sellers of alcoholic beverages, so ordinances that we may pass concerning an entertainment district would only impact those businesses that are licensed to sell alcoholic beverages in the central business I will now ask somebody to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. Discussion, counsel? Open the floor to discussion.
Yeah, Jack, I'll start. You know, talking about investing in the nest, I'm sitting here looking at a friend that grew up in Fairhope that has a successful business. I've got two other friends that grew up at Fairhope High School that run successful businesses in Fairhope, and the reason I'm supporting this is to support them and their business, it's not to turn downtown Fairhope into Bourbon Street. And just a little bit, I thought back, I remember about five or six years ago, another friend of mine that I grew up in Fairhope with wanted to start a business, and people came out and they fought him, they filled the hall outside. He was doing a tattoo parlor. Bike shops wanted to come in town, strip clubs, you name it, they were throwing it out, that Fairhope was doomed because this guy wanted to start a tattoo parlor. That's not the case. He sits quietly in an alley. He does beautiful work. I don't have a tattoo, but if you want one, I'd highly recommend Kevin Black. But anyway, this is, I'm not voting to support this, to change Fairhope. Alcohol is on the streets of Fairhope, and I'm doing it to protect... Alcohol is on the streets of Fairhope, and I'm doing it to protect my friends that are in business.
Other comments, council?
I guess I've, I've talked to a lot of people in the last, gosh, the last few months, but I would say the one thing I would put out there to the council and to the general public, I think there's certainly a lot of confusion about what exactly is being proposed. As outlined in the ordinance, it would only apply to special events, one hour before, one hour after. This is not a 365-day-a-year deal. This is not cover people that want to try to show up in town and bring their own cooler and pour it in a solo cup and walk around. I think that that qualifies. This is really, is geared towards protecting the restaurant owners. I, I certainly want to maintain the, the family atmosphere of Fairhope. I think that, you know, I think to walk around town during First Friday Art Walk with a glass of wine or, or beer in a shatterproof cup, I don't see an issue with that. I think maybe we will want to take another look at whether or not you would include, what events you would include. I know right now, the proposed ordinance has, has First Friday Art Walk, Mardi Gras, city-sponsored parades, and New Year's Eve. So it's a pretty limited, pretty limited group. That's probably 15 to 20 events throughout the year. If we wanted to go through those one by one and make any adjustments, I'd, I'd certainly be open to hearing that, too.
Yeah, I want to follow up a little bit on what Jimmy was just saying. You know, if this is something that the council is truly considering, I think there are a couple of things that would make this more beneficial for those that are going to be responsible for applying it in, in real life. And that is, you know, I think there's a, a lot of ambiguity with saying we want it to be an hour before and an hour, an hour after any event. If you're our police department trying to enforce that, what, what is that as, as it pertains to a Mardi Gras parade? When is an hour after? An hour after the last partygoer is left? An hour after the last parade, the last float has come through? An hour after the ball's over? I mean, what, what does that mean? And so I think there's, I think there's, there's some work that needs to go into here to figure out exactly what those times are going to be. My thought would be, if this is something that, that we're going to do, that it needs to be more finite and concrete so that our police department knows exactly what, police department and our restaurants know exactly what they're getting into. You know, for example, if it's, if it's on, if it's going to be Art Walk, it needs to say from 5:00 to 9:00, this is in effect. After that, it's not. So that everybody knows, the customer, the police, and the restaurant owner know exactly what they're doing and what the rules are. And I'm not necessarily saying this is something I'm in favor of, but if, but if it sounds like something that is going to move forward, you, you got to make it so that everybody knows what the rules are, because I think that's part of the problem. You know, it wasn't in effect at, at the Christmas parade on Friday night, but I saw lots of people with, with cups walking around. And it didn't change the event. But with that said, I personally don't think that this is something that we need for events like Christmas parade. I don't think it's something that we need for events like lighting of the trees. Those are events that, that are not, that I don't think are, or should be considered for this. In my mind, if this is something that we want to consider, I don't believe in rolling it out for everything and then saying, let's back it up if it doesn't work. I would be more in favor of it, again, if it's something that's being considered, starting it out on something a little smaller. And then if it does work, maybe it grows a little bit. See how it goes. Something like New Year's Eve, something like Art Walk, and then, and then kind of let it go from there. You know, I, I see both sides of this. I see that from the restaurant perspective. You know, I mean, it, it seems unfair to you guys that, that this is kind of the way it does. It seems like the burden should be on the person sneaking something out. That seems unfair. But I agree back, back here, you know, any decision we make up here that changes kind of the way things are done, the concern is always, is this going to be a change for the worse? Are we, are we doing something to diminish what, what is built here and what makes this place so great? And that's a concern in everything that we do, every decision we make, every time we vote for any change, whether it's minor, major, or, or may seem insignificant to a lot of people, that's always the worry. You know, I don't personally see this as something that will have a great significant change on the way things are done. But I do worry that with the way this is written, that there is too much uncertainty for the people that are responsible for enforcing it. And so I would like to see maybe some changes with that, if it's something that the council does decide to move forward with.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Boone?
Yeah, I guess that's the same statement I've had, that basically, I just don't see the need for alcohol on the streets, considering this is a family-oriented town with children and all the events that we do have, that this could possibly be a problem in the future. Or I just never have seen a benefit to alcohol in the streets of Fairhope, or pretty much, I've never seen a benefit to alcohol at all. I understand, you know, people like to drink and everything, but I just don't see the benefits. I certainly don't see the benefits where it will help the city of Fairhope at all.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Boone. I'll make a few comments. First of all, thanks to everybody that spoke. They're well-prepared and well-spoken, and, you know, this is one of those extremely difficult times when you're on the council, and you may think, well, it's not a difficult decision, you should vote against it, or you should vote for it. But I've talked to many, many, many people about this issue, and I would say the majority of, of people that I've spoken to have been in favor of, of this. I believe that we've tried to write this ordinance so that it is severely limited in scope, and I, I do realize that in some cases, when a thing, when you open Pandora's box, you can't put it back in. Although I, I do think that this council has resolve, and if this was to somehow backfire, I do think that they have the guts to back up, punt, and eliminate the ordinance. We don't know what the next two years or six years would bring in terms of a council. You could have a council elected that would enact an entertainment district that would last 365 days a year. But I do think that this council would have the wherewithal to, to back up and punt should, should something go awry with this very limited scope. I listened to Mr. Shepherd, made a very good point, is kind of, if it's not, if it's not broke, don't fix it. You didn't say it like that, but it's, you know, we're not having a hard time attracting people to our, our city now, so, so I may changes, and that, that resonates strongly with me. But also, I sympathize with the restaurant owners and the bar owners, and the people that work there, and how they've been handed down fines for things that, I know people will say that they can control it and they should pay to put somebody at the door, but I'm telling you, if there's somebody that wants to get a drink out of that establishment, they will get a drink out of that establishment. I heard of some of the instances of how that was taken out of these establishments, and you know, unless, unless you want these people frisking you or patting you down, which I don't think anybody wants to be treated like that here, that, that may be what it would take to stop that completely. Currently, we have people drinking on the streets in Fairhope. You go to any event whatsoever, Christmas parade, whatever event you want to name, if there's the public involved, there are people in Fairhope that drink socially, and they're going to have alcohol in a cup, might be a Yeti, might be a solo cup, might be a McDonald's cup. But there are people drinking on the streets, and they're breaking the law. And I feel like if this was to pass, and the designate, the designated cup has a lot to do with this, y'all. You know, it, it makes the policemen's men and women's job a little bit easier to enforce because if they do not have a designated cup, then there's a suspicion that they brought this drink from home, and that's where it's coming from. It's not being served by a professional that does have to worry about the liability. It's somebody that's coming in from home, that's, that's sneaking this drink in, and, you know, and I'm not saying they're bad people. Most people are very, very well-behaved here. But this bartender now has to be concerned with, if I give this person a cup and they walk out of here and indicates that they came from my place, they're going to be judicious in who they let walk out of there with a drink. So dare I say it, but there could be some benefit to the responsible drinking that goes on. I can point out, and I'll say it, you can go down to Henry George Park during Baldwin Pops, and people have tables set up with tablecloths and have a selection of white and red wine, in the bottle. That's not legal. And where are the people jumping up and down about these events and, or about enforcing the open container law? I, I think that if we, if we enforce our laws on the books, but allow people in a very, very limited fashion to leave these establishments, basically being given a cup by somebody that, that's a paid professional, I hope that they will be, the people that I know in the business are, take, take it very seriously because it's their livelihood. They don't want to lose their license or their business, that they'll be judicious in who they give these to. And we'll be able to identify where these people come from if they get out of line. We'll be able to track that through these, through these cups. So I don't have a scientific evidence that says that it would be more beneficial, but I think that that is some thoughts that could be considered, that there could be a benefit to that. I'd like to speak to the police more about that and about the enforcement of our, of our laws. It's state, it's state law, the open container laws are, are state laws. And so if, if we had this, it would be something, and I think that if you're not in compliance with the law, then we should, should enforce them as well. And the, the entertainment district, and the fact that we have it tied to something tangible, might make that a little bit easier to enforce. The other thing is that if, if you know you're going to get in trouble for getting caught with a drink that you bring from home, you might, you might go into a business more, dare I say it again, it might increase revenues, but it's also, they're also going to, I'm going back to, they're going to be served by people that are, are responsible, people that are serving them, as opposed to just reaching back into the cooler or the flask or whatever it is that they bring to them. So I take this extremely serious, and I'm trying to think of all angles, and I appreciate everybody's feedback tonight, and I think we'll let this lay over, council, until the next meeting. Mayor, did you want to say anything?
Just had one thought.
You are a bar slash restaurant owner, you are a small business owner.
Yes, and I'm not going to speak on, on that. I want to speak one just in general.
I want to say before you do, too, is that, you know, the mayor has never tried to push any of this because of her business as well.
Right.
And I don't even know what you're going to say about that, but I wouldn't say that.
I just, well, I think you'll know that when I say my remarks, but I think the only event that happens in Fairhope that would qualify for an event district would be First Friday Art Walk. It is a period of time, a short period of time, where we truly are encouraging citizens to go and visit as many businesses as they can within a short period of time. And there's lots of businesses that participate in this, mainly the ones that don't sell alcohol. And these are actually the businesses that have worked many, many years to build up this event, so restaurants and bars do benefit, because they're going to go out afterwards and patronize these businesses. But the ones who truly invest in this event are the very ones who do not serve alcohol. They're the ones that spend money on advertising, hosts different artists, authors, musicians. These are the businesses that, for every First Friday Art Walk, they invest money for, for the benefit of citizens and enjoying this event, and sometimes don't take in $1 for that investment. I can assure you that bars and restaurants benefit regardless. They're going to go out afterwards oftentimes. It, it ends at 8:00 at night. So I am absolutely for an entertainment district just for First Friday Art Walk. And I think it would be, I, I think it would pay off, and I think it will be very similar to the, what you had just described, Councilwoman Brown, about the tattoo parlor. It, it's one of those things that we project this, you know, big idea of what we think could happen, and then it ends up not being a very big deal, just like the Roundabout, when we started, started talking about the Roundabout. But I can assure you, this is not something that, if you approved it, if council approved this, they couldn't take it back. They can absolutely take it back. It's a, you know, so I, that's my personal thoughts. I don't think any parade in Fairhope, because they are family-friendly, needs to have alcohol served. It just, it does not make sense for Fairhope.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other comments from the council?
I guess, one last one, I, Chief, I would like to know if this were implemented, any thoughts on what y'all would need to, you know, Jay had alluded to the fact of maybe something more finite and concrete as far as timeframes? I mean, have y'all discussed this at all, the police department, any thoughts?
I haven't discussed it with any of my staff at this point, and I'm hoping that whether it be passed, it would have to be fine more.
Okay. Okay. Should we decide to move forward? That shouldn't, shouldn't be too, too difficult, though. Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, council. We'll let this lay over until the next council meeting. Item number nine is an ordinance amending ordinance number 1504 and authorizing and granting Bell South telecommunications doing businesses AT&amp;T Alabama the right to use the rights away of the city to provide video services to the citizens of the city under the terms of the original agreement adopted on November 25, 2013. The addendum to the agreement which amends paragraph to the agreement by changing date of termination from December 31, I think that should be 2018, not 2108, to December 31, 2023, and paragraph 13, the notice is paragraph of the agreement by changing the address for AT&amp;T Alabama. May I have somebody introduce this ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, thank you. Do we need the city attorney to describe this in any great length? He'll be happy to do so. I think this is just standard business?
Standard, it's just continuing a contract that's been in place and making amendment of a notice provision and extending the date is all it is.
And this doesn't have anything to do with what they're paying us to use the right-of-way, or is no leases or anything like that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, do we need to suspend with the rules, Ms. Clark, to vote on this tonight? Or is there any reason to vote on this tonight? Can we just let this lay over to the next meeting?
It doesn't terminate until December 31.
Okay. So we could just let this lay over until, for final adoption to the next meeting? Would that be okay with you, council?
Yep.
Okay, we'll let this lay over. Okay, item number 10 is a resolution. The city of Fairhope authorizes submission of a pre-application to a DECA request in FY 2020 recreational trails program grant and authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to sign the required grant application on behalf of the city to construct a recreational trail located throughout North Beach Park. Total projected, total projected cost estimate is $499,962.65. There's an 80/20 match, and the city's estimate would be $99,992.53. Would you like Mr. Peterson to come up and describe this once again? So this was submitted, this application was submitted, I want to say it was over a year ago, and we were not approved, so we're resubmitting the application.
We don't need Richard unless he's, unless you're just dying to do it. Okay, then that...
It was Richard Johnson there, right?
I've got Richard on there. No, I should put Richard J. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson? I'll entertain a motion allowing the...
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If there are none, all is in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 11 is a resolution. The city council hereby approves and will write a formal letter of support to the Mississippi-Alabama Sea Grant Consortium in collaboration with NOAA's Office for Coastal Management to support a public-private resilience effort that will help create disaster mitigation strategies, identify vulnerabilities in businesses to, wow, identify vulnerabilities in businesses, create continuity plans. I think there's a word missing somewhere in there, but let me get a gist of that. Okay. Sherri Lee had mentioned, described this in the work session. Would you like her to come back up and provide more information on this?
Could you read that again, Jack?
Pardon me? I'm not listening to you. I'll entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 12 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope, city council desires to provide a reliable code-compliant electrical system for the main pier. The council further recognizes the need to invest in infrastructure upgrades to accomplish this desire of reliable code-compliant electrical system to which the Fairhope City Council agrees here to increase the funding for student engineering amount not to exceed $13,621.2 and continue to work with FEMA officials to seek reimbursement for the replacement and upgrades of the electrical systems at the main pier required to meet current building codes and to ensure the safety of its citizens and guests who enjoy this facility. I believe I have this right. If you have any questions, please direct them to Mr. Richard Peterson. Are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to provide this funding.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 13 is a resolution. The Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number two of bid number 027-17 cured in place pipe for sanitary sewer mains for an additional one year as per the terms and conditions of the original contract. The annual bid for unit prices is listed on attached schedule with a not-to-exceed amount of $341,350. Anybody like Mr. Peterson to come up and describe this further? If not, I'll entertain a motion to execute the contract.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, we'll let the public know this is basically supposed to prevent rainwater from infiltrating the sewer system and causing the overflow.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 14 is a resolution to award an RFQ for replacement pump and column assembly for well number seven to Griner or Griner Drilling Service.
Griner.
It's Griner.
Is it Griner with two ends?
No.
With a total cost of $32,200. I'll entertain a motion to provide this funding.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 15 is a resolution to award bid number 004-19 for the annual contract for hydrated lime and gas chlorine chemicals to Water and Waste Specialties LLC with a total bid proposal of $9 per 50-pound bag of hydrated lime and $92 per 150-pound cylinder of gas chlorine. We'll tell you that these were the low bidders, and this is just the cost of doing business. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Whitman? I'll entertain a motion to award the RFQ.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Oh, okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. You're welcome. Item 16 is a resolution to award bid number 002-18 for multiple transformers as follows. Item number one, power transformers to ABB Incorporated with a total bid proposal of And items 2A, 2B, and 3, power transformers to Virginia Transformer Corporation with a total bid proposal of $1,337,594, a grand total of $2,529,114 over three fiscal years. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Peterson?
I've got a question just on the bid process. I'm looking at the budget versus over/under budget amount, and I'm trying to determine if it's, you know, $470,000 under budget or if it's $500,000 over budget and we just decided to split between two years instead of one.
Well, the way we bid those transformers is that we would accept delivery on specific dates for each of the different stations that we had. So I think what we're looking at is the budget for this year is $1.5 million as part of that. And because the delivery of the $1.191 million worth, I think that's where the, what would be an under run of that budget. But we're going to have some other costs involved. We may be buying some property, and we may be looking at some other component parts that we will probably get to before the end of this fiscal year that will, and we may be over by the time we get past all that.
Okay.
What I think, Jimmy, also is that the $1.029 million over that you're seeing truly is not over budget, because we haven't passed the 20 and 2021 budget yet.
Right.
So if those are budgeted, they would be on, and we'll not talk about the budget.
Well, my question was really, are we spending two times that number at the bottom, and we've just divided it to, say, 2020 and 2021? Or is the grand total that number?
That's the grand total.
Yeah, the grand total for the transformers.
Right, right, right. I know the grand total's like $10 million.
Yeah, the $1.029 is the grand total between the, of the two years.
And that is spread out over the three fiscal years, although the last fiscal year is not going to be a whole lot for that part of it.
Okay.
I think there's one word, Michael, go.
There was one transformer delivered the last year that, Belanta.
Yeah, I think Belanta was the last one that's delivered, the last fiscal year of these three years we're talking about.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to award the bid for the transformers. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 17 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope has voted to purchase one pre-trained dual-purpose drug detection dog for the police department, and it is a specialty type of purchase through Southern Coast K9. The total cost will not exceed $13,500. Anybody have any further questions for Chief Hollenhead?
I have one. It may sound kind of silly, but dual-purpose drug, is that, does it do other things than drug detection or?
It's a drug and, um, drug.
Okay. Dual-purpose.
Okay. Any other questions for the chief? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to purchase the K9.
So moved.
Second.
Two motions and two seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 18 is a resolution. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase outdoor Wi-Fi equipment for the Fairhope Pier in downtown areas for the city. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the National IPA Buying Group contract and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. It's already been nationally bid through the National IPA's bid process. The total cost is $26,249.76. If you look back.
Twenty-four cents under budget.
Twenty-four cents under budget.
Twenty-four cents under budget.
That's a pretty good bid.
There you go. Now, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Montgomery that just came in? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion for the purchase.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Item 19 is an appointment to the harbor board. The nominee for a four-year term is Mr. Don Bates, for a term ending December 2021. Would that be 2022 if it's a four-year term?
It's a three-year term.
Are they filling an expired term?
They're filling an expired term.
Oh, okay.
Not expired. He's no longer with us.
I got you. I'm with you. Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions for harbor board member, Mr. Boone? I assume, did the harbor board make a recommendation of this? Very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion to grant this appointment.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the appointment. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number 20 is a request of Mike Lyons on behalf of the Fairhope Sunset Rotary requesting permission to use the city streets. That would be Quality Section Street, Magnolia Avenue, and Church Street for a fundraising event that will benefit the Fairhope Point Clear Rotary Youth Club on Saturday, January 12th. That must be, I suppose, 2019, I believe. And you should have a map of those streets in your binder or on your iPad. It's a .5K run-walk. Chief, is there any reason to deny this application?
No.
Okay. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to grant this request.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
As I say, I saw on Facebook it was billed as a race for the rest of us, so.
Yeah, I might be able to complete that .5K.
Kind of, I was hoping to see Mike here to hear a little more about it.
Start training.
That might be boring for Robert, but the rest of us might want to participate in that. Okay. Item 21 was an item that was added to the agenda at the beginning of tonight's meeting. This is concerning the one-time supplemental pay increase for the City of Fairhope employees for a period of, let's see, that doesn't look right either, it says first of December 2017 through 30th of November 2018. Okay, so that is in re- for that one-time bonus. Okay, correct. So they shall receive $20 per month of employment during said period. To qualify, an employee must be a full-time employee during this period. An employee hired or owner before the 15th day of a month will be given credit for the full month. An employee hired or owner after the 16th day of the month will not be given credit for that month. In order to receive this supplemental pay increase, an employee must be employed on the 30th of November. And for the same period in hiring relates qualifying part-time employees shall receive the following: the first year, $25; second year, $50; third year, $75; and fourth year, $100. The maximum amount for part-time employees is $100. The one-time supplemental pay increase will be awarded on Friday, the 14th of December 2018. And if you were wondering, can they make that happen? I know that the finance department is working on that, probably as we speak. They're working on that, and they said that they can make that happen. Also, be it further resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope that the proposed recommendation by the personnel board presented and reviewed at the December 10, 2018 city council work session regarding extending the pay scales be hereby approved and adopted to extend the pay scales by 6% across the board. And also pursuant to resolution number 3206-18, if an employee is maxed out on pay and the personnel board determines the range of pay should be increased, that employee will be given the difference in raise prior to the range increases in additional to the one-time supplemental pay increase. For council, what that means, that's some fancy language, that means if we pass this, we go back to the date at which we passed that budget, and since they couldn't receive that pay increase because they were maxed out, we will go back to the date at which we passed that budget and give them that small amount of money that they would be due, that one and a half percent increase for that amount of time. Is that clear, Smod?
Got it.
Okay, all right. I will entertain a motion to pass that resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just once again, thank the personnel board, thank the finance department for being patient with us and getting this to you. Thanks for all the work y'all are doing to get this out to the employees by the end of the year as well. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Next item is public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Before I say that, also, Marcus, after the executive session, do you anticipate us having any items to vote on coming out of the executive session?
Tut, do you see anything? He's tut's here to talk.
Mr. Win, do you anticipate us voting on any measures after we come out of there?
No, I don't.
Okay. I say that for the public, if you're here, after public participation, after we go into executive session, we'll come back and simply adjourn.
I'm going to take that back. There may be a resolution, council. Sorry.
Okay. I stand corrected. We may come back and consider a motion after the executive session. Okay, so if you're interested, stick around, and floor is open for public participation. If you come forth, you'll state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Wilson and council members. My name is John Manellis. I live at 104 White Avenue. This past Friday, I had some tree trimming done at my home. Prior to that, I called Fairhope Waste Management and spoke with Dale Lindner to ensure that the city would pick up some of the larger pieces that I anticipated having removed. He confirmed that the city, in fact, would, and he actually even offered to have a truck come out prior to my scheduled Wednesday pickup. And I said, "No, Dale, thanks. I think I'll be fine, but thanks for the offer." As things turned out, I created a bigger pile than I had anticipated, and I really had a more immediate need to have that pile removed prior to my scheduled pickup on that Wednesday. So I called Dale. It was 12:15, lunchtime, didn't expect him to be there. Left a voicemail and went back out front, and within six minutes, and I want to repeat that, within six minutes, that truck pulled up. I was speechless when I walked up to the gentleman that was driving. I couldn't believe it. And so he helped, he removed the, it's a pretty large pile, removed the pile, and not only that, got out of his truck, helped rake up some of the items, and got the job done. And I was very thankful for that. I was going to write a letter to the mayor, but I thought, you know, the best way to thank Dale is to let you all know what an outstanding employee for this city that he is, and also to let his immediate boss, Richard Johnson, know that. But there's more that you really ought to know about Dale. He was the very first employee that I came in contact with when I moved here several years ago. I was confused by the trash schedule in my area, put out the container, it wasn't coming that day, called the city, talked to Dale. He enlightened me, and I said, "Thank you." He sent out a truck that afternoon. Didn't ask him to, he just took it upon himself, picked up the trash. So, you know, as you know, I come here quite a bit. I hear a lot about what may not be working in Fairhope, and some of that's justified. But, you know, there's a saying that the grass is greener on the other side. The grass is most greenest here in Fairhope, I promise you, because I've been on the other side. And it's people, it's employees like Dale that make us the greenest side of that pasture. Not only Dale, but many of the other employees. And so I kind of wrote down, this is a time of thanks that we have with Thanksgiving and Christmas and being with family, so I kind of thought I would just share this on a positive note, because you hear a lot of negative, about what I'm thankful for, for Fairhope. Thankful for the beautiful bay, the bayfront and the pier. I'm thankful for the many parks and green spaces within the city. I'm thankful for the flower box-lined streets and hanging flower baskets. I'm thankful for the American flags that the city displays. I'm thankful for the Fairhope police, who have a reputation for being here to serve its citizens and who do so in a friendly and helpful way. I'm thankful for our public works and utility workers, who respond quickly and efficiently when a storm downs power lines or a water line breaks. I'm thankful for all of you elected officials, who always respond to my inquiries in a timely manner and give me the benefit of your time, but you also give the benefit of your time to all the citizens of our city. And finally, I'm thankful to God for leading me to this amazing town that is now my home. As Fairhope grows, and we have to deal with the inevitable changes that come, I hope that those things I just listed stay the same. I thank you, wish you and your families a happy and joyous holiday season.
Thank you, John.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, I'll close public participation. Counsel, I will read the letter from the city attorney. It says, "As city attorney Marcus C. McDowell, I hereby request this Fairhope City Council going to executive session based on section 36-25A-783 to discuss pending litigation and possible settlement options regarding said pending litigation. City Attorney McDowell does hereby declare that the city council is a City of Fairhope authorized regular city council meeting on Monday, December 10, 2018 to go into executive session. The city council shall be in executive session for approximately 30 minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council shall return to the city council At the end of the executive session, the city council shall return to the city council chambers to resume the regular city council meeting. The time is 7:35 PM. City council exits to the dais to go into executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session."
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Entertain a motion to amend tonight's agenda to add a resolution authorizing Mayor Karen Wilson to negotiate a fee schedule with Jason McCormick, an attorney regarding current litigation involving Charter Oak Insurance Company, and to bring back the proposed fee schedule to the next council meeting for discussion and/or approval. Can entertain a motion to.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, so now I'll read this resolution. Say, "Be it resolved that the city council of Fairhope, Alabama hereby authorizes Mayor